Good evening. I'd like to call this special meeting of the HIER Commission to order at 6:40. And we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Khan. Thank you. Adrian, if you could please take the role.
Commissioner Brennhaug? Here. Commissioner Travis Morris?
Here.
Commissioner Chen? Absent. Commissioner Herrera?
Present.
Commissioner Khan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Godo?
Here.
Chair Jennings Nunez?
Here.
Youth Ambassador Kelly Muñoz Rios?
Here.
Youth Ambassador Erin C. Two?
Absent.
Thank you. We will now have some announcements from our staff liaison, Matthew Morales Stevens.
If you wish to address the HIER Commission during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk, Adrian Franquez. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to be addressed, excuse me, if you wish to be added to the distribution list, receive HIER Commission agendas, please email your request to hearcommission@sgch.org.
We'll now go to approval of our agenda order. Are there any objections to the agenda order? Thank you. So hearing none, the agenda order is approved. And we will go on to our first item, which is public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the HIER Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the HIER Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the HIER Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. If you wish to address the HIER Commission, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. Matthew, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have a public comment by Andrew.
Good evening, Commission. My name's Andrew, longtime resident of San Gabriel. And I would like to just start off by asking if Chair Jennings Nunez would allow me to go beyond the three minutes that I'm allotted. I won't be much longer, but I practice this at home and I can't do it in three minutes.
We will give you some leeway, yes.
Thank you. Excuse me. What I want to speak to today is Assembly Bill 481. Assembly Bill 41 is giving authority to law enforcement to use military equipment. And it was born out of the same reason that the HIER Commission was born out of police use of force and killings in police. And that's basically how the HIER Commission came kind of right after, in 2020, after the whole George Floyd and amongst other killings by police. So Assembly Bill 41, it was signed into law September of 2021. And it was enacted January 1st of 2022. What it required was that the police department would make a presentation to the city council and the community to get the authority to use military-type equipment, anything that was acquired before January 1st of 2022. Our previous chief, Harris, he delayed it for two and a half months. He used it as an excuse of the description of what a command vehicle was. And I had spoke to him about it because I was saying, "Our little suburban doesn't come under that," but just put it on there anyway. But he didn't. So then, so he made that presentation on July 19th of 2022. And if you want to look at the presentation, you can go back to YouTube and Google that city council meeting of that day. So what the city council did is they approved a LexiPo policy, 707. That was the policy that the police department uses that addresses this military-type equipment. And then on August 16th, the city passed, you know, they passed an ordinance, ordinance 684. And then it went into effect September 6th of 2022. So part of this bill, it requires that the police department present a annual report. And there's six bullet points. And they're basically, you know, who gets to use this equipment? What type of training? You know, the cost of the equipment, the cost, you know, maintenance and so forth. This report should have been presented to us in May. But when Chief Harris presented the original presentation, he said it would be on or around July 1st. Here we are December 12th. We don't have this report as of yet. It hasn't been presented to the community or to the city council. Part of the ordinance...
We'll do two minutes.
So part of the ordinance is that the report will be presented first to the HIER Commission before it goes on to the city council. And so I don't run out of time. There is an advocacy toolkit that is online by the, it's the American Friends Service Committee. And if you Google AFSC and then California AB 481, it kind of gives, it'll give you a toolkit on what to look for when this report comes to us, all the things that you could look for so that we could hold our police accountable for having the report that has everything that is needed, you know, for the community to understand why, you know, what they're spending, you know, what type of training, who's allowed to use this equipment. So it kind of brings up, you know, the questions that you could ask about this. My biggest issue is with the LexiPo policy because in the LexiPo policy, what it states in it is, it says, under the definition of military equipment, it says included but is not limited to the following. So the "but not limited to" kind of opens it up to whatever they want. Where the actual law, the Assembly Bill 41, it states, under military definition, it said meaning the following. And then it gives 15 bullet points as to what needs to be covered into that bill. So that's one of the things. And then the other thing is, I want to see if we could advocate to not allow tear gas to be used. We have that in our arsenal here for this police department. And that is a violation of international law to use tear gas against, you know, civilians or even in war, warfare. So I'd like to advocate that we try to get that out of the arsenal. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say, just because it is part of our work plan that I just want to say at this point that we do have two meetings coming up that it would be very appropriate to address these issues. And you'll hear more about it later. But we have a special meeting on December 18th with our police department at 5:30 in the Grapevine Room. And that meeting is open to the public, even though it's not here in the council chambers. And then we are inviting our police chief and representatives from the San Gabriel Police Department to our January meeting. We just need to confirm that. Both of those will be excellent places to make public comments and to address these concerns. So thank you. It's a special meeting. It hasn't been posted yet. So this is the first.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to approval of our minutes. Do we have any public comments on this action item? Matthew?
Yes, we have a public comment by Andrew.
Is it related to the approval of the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
So I read the minutes because I didn't come to the meeting. And I noticed on some of the voting that you did on the work plan and some of the voting that was done, there was something else in there. You showed Commissioner Khan as absent and also as voting. So if you look at the absent, you'll see there was three votes that were taken. Just something I caught when I was reading it.
Thank you. It is nice to know that our public is paying attention. So I appreciate that. So with those corrections to the minutes, are there any additional corrections? So if not, we'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to, or I will solicit a motion to approve the minutes of the October 24th meeting with the corrections made. And the correction is that Commissioner Khan was here. So with that, I move to approve. And I have a second from Commissioner Khan. If you could please take the vote, Adrian.
Commissioner Brennhaug?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis Morris?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen is absent. Commissioner Herrera?
Aye.
Commissioner Khan?
Present.
Vice Chair Godo?
Aye.
Chair Jennings Nunez?
Aye.
Motion passed by a vote of six ayes, zero nays, zero abstentions, and one absent.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to our first discussion item. This is going to be a discussion of our approved 2023 annual work plan. This is where we will review and discuss our 2023 approved annual work plan. Matthew, do we have any public comments on this item?
We do not.
So kind of to start us off, I just, at our, I think maybe the last meeting, the meeting, our October meeting, we had a little bit of a discussion around, I guess, really kind of how effective the HIER Commission has been. And it seemed to be a little bit of disappointment in some people's voices, that feeling that we hadn't had very many speakers or just feeling like maybe we hadn't accomplished as much as they wanted to. And so I wanted to do a little review. We did it last year as well, to kind of indicate to all of us here, to people in the public, really what we've accomplished, which has been a lot. And as a voluntary board, I think it is certainly that we have taken on a lot more than other voluntary government bodies and other commissions. So just run through that and then we'll talk a little bit more about our 2023 annual work plan. So this is just our year in review. You can go to the next slide. So obviously, a lot of our focus this year was on the Mental Wellness Expo and for good reason. Our city has made a commitment to mental health. And really, it is a direct result of the emphasis. I feel that the HIER Commission is placed on mental health and mental wellness and stems from the survey that Vice Chair Godo and one of our previous commissioners really spearheaded. And so congratulations on that event. Next. Again, we've had a really productive year. I feel like the acknowledgement of Black History Month, of Juneteenth, of Pride Month is something new for our city and that has grown and it's become something that is expected in addition to those areas like AAPI and Hispanic Heritage Month that were celebrated maybe previously. In terms of people that we've had come and present at our meeting, we actually have had a couple this year, despite a number of meetings being taken up by Mental Wellness Expo planning. We had someone from the LA County Commission on Human Relation come and give us the hate crime report for San Gabriel Valley. That was early in the year. Jorge Rivera, who's the co-founder of Healing and Justice Center, and came and gave us a report on digital equity. We submitted a letter to the LA County Board of Supervisors and Hilda Solis in support of the digital equity initiative and that we've established some really valuable partnerships that we saw, especially in the Mental Wellness Expo, with our own local commissions, with our... What's the H for? Thank you. Historic Preservation Commission, as well as the Community Services Commission, and then local nonprofits like AYC, LA vs. Hate, and a number of other organizations that have been a part of our Mental Wellness Expo for the last couple of years. Next slide. This one was particularly for Erin because Erin's last meeting was questioning about our recycling process here in San Gabriel. And just a few days later, and I don't know if Clara did this especially for us, but there was a really nice video that came out on Instagram that just reminded people about how recycling works in San Gabriel. And so I just want the commissioners to know, just like all the residents should know, that really your voices make a difference. And so the city is listening and encourage people to continue to voice their concerns. We have definitely seen a more active acknowledgement of Native American History Month and Native American Heritage Day. And I hope that you caught those Instagram posts from our city. One was on Thanksgiving for Native American Heritage Day and then in celebration of the month. And I don't think that we had those previously. So again, I think that's a direct result of the work of this commission and the Land Acknowledgement Statement Commission. Next. You probably remember our scrambling around because we did two public functions this year. We participated in San Gabriel's Play Day on May 20th. Next slide. And we were there for Surf's Up. And in particular, we acknowledged LGBTQ+ advocacy resources and Pride Month. Next. We're going to talk more about this later, but we are starting a big campaign and that, you know, we kicked it off in 2023 by having this public voting for our emblem or for our graphic that we're going to use. So just kind of in conclusion, you know, the concepts of equity, access, and inclusion are really now routinely being considered in all areas of city planning and ideas. I don't know what I was writing there. But I don't feel like those things would have been discussed or considered in the way that they are if it was not for the HIER Commission. And so I feel like our city really does have a commitment. And it started with the formation of the HIER Commission and that all the people on the commission pushed the city to move forward and to really honor that. So I want all of us to really kind of, you know, give ourselves a pat on the back, a hand clap, our staff members for all of their really incredible work at making our visions come true and just to really emphasize that you are doing good work. So with that, the 2023 work plan is still in our agenda packet. And I don't know if we need to discuss more about it. Are there any questions or comments about our 2023 work plan?
I just want to say thank you for that year in review. That is a really nice summary. And I'm going to also throw in that although they were not official actions by the HIER Commission, that a number of the commissioners, if not all of the commissioners, weighed in on affordable housing ordinance. And also, we're representing the commission at the city budget surplus meeting. So I think we have done quite a lot and I'm glad to see it all wrapped up together because I think we do forget. It's been a long year. So thank you.
So I don't want to downplay what we did, right? Obviously, we... But we have done a lot of work, right? If we see it here in retrospect, we can see how significant our work is and how everybody, you know, is playing a vital role and pushing our city forward. So I also want to commend everybody. But a question on reasoning behind not having guest speakers? Was it because of the planning and the lack of time that we had? Is that why? Or did we have no speakers signed up? Or?
So the speakers are scheduled as they're brought forward by the commission members. Excuse me. I know that there's one or two that are kind of on the queue and ready for 2024. There is certainly a time constraint for a number of those meetings where there had been a guest speaker scheduled. Commission meetings have the potential to be much longer than some of them already were. So that's why some of them were not provided at that time. And I think to Chair Jennings' point, kind of restructuring the planning of certain items may allow for those guest speaker opportunities to be more regular at the upcoming meetings.
Yeah, because I feel like doing that, we really were bridging the community with the different opportunities that they have, resources that they have out there, and making those nonprofits or whatever entities strengthening the bonds between our city and them and allowing them accessibility to our city as well. Sometimes they don't know that they can come and speak. And I think that went a long way to bring education as well to everybody in the community. So next year, if we can continue that, I know it's based on recommendation. But last year, we had basically a speaker every year, every month, right? And I think it was pretty interesting. It was always something totally different and educational for us at least and whoever tuned in. So next year, having something, you know, going back to those cadence, I think will be very beneficial for the city and for ourselves.
Part of my, raising my eyebrows was to look at the HIER Commission's goals or the purpose and to see the functions that we have done. That was probably my most sort of frustration in that respect. Other than that, I appreciate the points that you raised, the things that we have done. And I continue to, you know, improve and do a lot more than what we have done. So thank you.
So I guess keeping that in mind, our goals and purpose. And I think everything that we did last year fits into the goals and purposes of the HIER Commission. But certainly, this year, I feel like will be different because we have scaled back and we're not planning to do the Mental Wellness Expo. And that really did take up a huge chunk of meeting time last year. Just, it was just what it was. And so I don't think the limitation in presentations was necessarily intentional. We just were so caught up in planning and we didn't figure out a different way to plan until towards the end. So please keep in mind those presenters that you would like to see come forth this year because the more heads up we can give to our city staff, the more likely it is that we can find someone to fit the theme or to discuss whatever item we would like to discuss. A lot of, especially really popular speakers or speakers who are in the area who are sought after, you know, their schedules get planned out for months. And so when we call them up two weeks, a month before for our next meeting, they're just not available. And so the more that we can maybe plan out our schedule for speakers in January or February and give, you know, five or six, that really helps out our staff in terms of starting to contact people. But that's a good idea.
Is there a way to get, well, I want to know what you guys feel. Is there a way, like, would it be beneficial if we opened it up to the public and see, or the residents to see what they want to talk or hear about? Do we have the capacity? And what does the commission feel about that? Because, you know, on a day-to-day, we're thinking about, oh, this might be good. This might be good. But if we open it up to the residents to see what they want to hear, I think we will get more viewership maybe and more interest. And it's not just what we want to hear.
I think we're challenged the same way we always are with how to engage and reach out to the residents. So I would say at this point, probably the best way to do it is to use our own public. We are all ambassadors for the city. And so in whatever venues we are in or with whatever groups, if you want to ask that group of people, what would you like to see brought to the city? That might be the best way. We've tried surveys and things like that before and they're just, they're difficult and they're expensive and time-consuming. And we usually have a pretty low yield. And I feel like probably if you put in your next newsletter, what would you like to hear, you know, the city present? What kind of information or resources? You would probably reach more people than our survey will. And so we all kind of have a, you know, a group of residents that we can reach out to. Our student ambassadors are at the school. And so then to take that information and bring it back to plan, at least my feeling is that would probably be equally as effective as other means we've tried.
Just a follow-up on that. So let's just say, for example, if a resident were to reach out, let's say, to the city and they would recommend a particular speaker, how would we go based on that? Matthew, would you present it to us? Or just in case, you know, it might not ever happen, but I just kind of want to know.
Sure. So if a resident came forward and had a particular organization in mind that they feel would be well-suited to provide a speaker, we would vet that organization first as staff members. And then if it automatically falls in alignment with either, A, one that has not been provided and B, that is already of interest, then we would just program that in. If it's some, if it's an organization that we really can't find information on, it's possible that it won't make it to the commission and we'll just have to kind of inform the resident that unfortunately, that doesn't quite fit within either the scope of the commission or for that particular purpose and potentially find an alternative for them. Or if there's a particular topic that comes forward, we can certainly try to find an organization that falls in alignment. But that tends to be a bit more time-consuming and difficult versus that an organization that might be willing and able to...
Thank you.
If there's nothing else on that discussion item, then we'll move on to the 2024 annual work plan preparation. So we are beginning the planning for our 2024 work plan. Matthew, do we have any public comments on this discussion item?
We do not.
Thank you. So if not, then at our October 24th meeting, we actually had a really nice discussion with those commissioners who were present and started to plan out kind of a draft form. A lot of our 2024 work plan is carryover from 2023. And we left things purposely kind of broad just to allow us to go in different directions. Our work plan doesn't have to be exact, exact in terms of what we're planning to do. It's just to give the council an idea. But we didn't want to finalize anything, obviously, because we didn't have all of our commissioners here. And we wanted to give everyone an opportunity to be a part of that planning. With that said, though, I am hoping that maybe today we can finalize it because part of, again, what happened last year is that it got pushed way into March or April, I think, before we even had a work plan that was finalized. And again, that just took up more meeting time. So let's get started. So the draft 2024 work plan is part of your agenda packet as well. Those items that have been highlighted in blue just need a little bit more clarification for our staff. But I did kind of go back and listen to the last meeting and put together just some highlights. Again, I love PowerPoints, so just PowerPoint all the time. So just to go through things, I'm going to go through the different areas and you can compare them here. But hopefully captured at least what was presented that might be a little bit new from the last time. So one thing, and I would like for this to be pulled out as a separate item because I don't really think it falls under any of the categories. But the HIER Commission is requesting a budget this year. We've gone back and forth about what that budget should look like. But I think it is reasonable to request a budget of $6,000. One of the city council members recommended or offered 10. You know, we proposed 10. Proposed 10. We've asked for 2,500 before for our Mental Wellness Expo. We're asking to do other things this year. So for me, this is kind of a happy medium. Ask for more, you'll probably get less. So, but we did ask for a specific budget for the HIER Commission this year. Next. We have these seven areas of priority. So you'll see them on your draft and we'll go through those. And these are the same seven areas that we developed our first year. And we opened up at one of the previous meetings. If we somehow want to change this, we can. But for right now, it's serving us well. So under equity, training, and inequities in city policy, we didn't put this on, but I would like some sort of update from the Human Resources Department on policies for implicit bias training requirements for city employees and staff and what they plan to do in terms of annual or semi-annual training. I know that they are continuing to offer... I know that they are continuing to offer training, so it would be nice to just bring that information back to the here commission. And, and I put, and everything in green, please, it's up for discussion. I put some things down to try to get us up to that $6,000. I would love, just as the city council goes to some training during the year, for the commissioners to find some specific training, including our youth ambassadors having to do with DEI work or, you know, that focuses on, on our area.
If I can make a recommendation that perhaps, perhaps staff can look at what's called GAR. It's the Government Alliance for Racial Equity. They are a national organization in which local municipalities will be, will, they seek membership usually, but they do offer trainings. And there's sort of like an escalation of different trainings, like beginner training and more advanced training. And I think it would be super appropriate for this particular body because it is geared specifically at government municipal workers and I believe folks who serve in some type of a commission capacity. I think it would be a good extension of that. And I do think it might even be worthwhile for maybe staff to kind of report back on what we could do to seek membership with the organization because I'm not 100% sure, but I do believe you also receive somewhat of a discount if you do the training, if you seek training after getting membership. And there's a lot of organizations, including the City of Los Angeles, who's a member.
And if there are any comments in terms of equity training, like when we go through the, the points, please make them, and then afterwards we'll go through the, through the draft. But, so hopefully working with our staff, working with our city manager, with some of the resources, they, does GAR, is that an acronym for something?
Government Alliance for Racial Equity.
Next slide. So in terms of community engagement, we'll hear more about this in, in a bit, but we did discuss at the previous meeting, kind of restructuring our programs around mental wellness and not, and, and what did you say, sunset? Sunsetting the Mental Wellness Expo and, and moving our energies into a different area. So there is a possibility of a movie screening and panel discussion that you hear more about, continuing the work with our indigenous population in San Gabriel. And then our big program this year probably is going to be our All Are Welcome program. And so we'll need budgets for both of those, those areas. Commissioner Khan at our last meeting mentioned that he would really like for us, and Commissioner Herrera has mentioned this in previous meetings also, to kind of reach out and, and meet directly with the public and what, what could that look like? And so I said, I think it might be hard to get all of the commissioners to each of these areas, but if we could have representatives of the commission at different functions and with these different local organizations and nonprofits to kind of go in and just present what the here commission is about, ask for people's feedback, you know, we don't have to stay for the whole thing, but if we could just make a list maybe of, of local functions that we want to try to participate in, I, I think that would be a nice way to get information out there. So thank you, Commissioner Khan. Next. For youth engagement, we're obviously going to continue our youth ambassador program. Applications are going to open in March. That's what happened last year. We've discussed an annual youth ambassador-led project or meeting. And so Youth Ambassador RIOs, I think, may give us a little bit of information about that today. Continue to encourage other city commissions because we've said there is a lot of opportunity to have youth involvement in some of our other commissions, maybe not in a youth ambassador, you know, way, but in some other volunteer way. And then along with the youth ambassador-led project, that if, depending on what the project is, that we might be able to assign a budget. If it is, at least this year, just running a meeting, that might not need a budget. But if there's something larger and, and youth ambassadors who decide to was mentioning something in the climate change and sustainability area, then, you know, maybe we would have a budget for that. Next. Community information, this is there and, and this is thing two. Thanks to city manager Lazaretto suggested that we ask to be part of that first draft plan from the city council on how they are going to utilize the, the budget that they are putting forth for additional mental health services in the city. So that's in here. Next. Accessibility. Vice Chair Goto really stressed that our city should use some of this additional budget to enhance access to city-sponsored community events and activities for persons with various disabilities. Partnerships. So continue to work with the Historical Preservation and Community Cultural Resources. The Historical Preservation and Cultural Resources Commission to develop ways to promote cultural humility, which is now their preferred term over cultural competence, because the idea is that you really can't become competent in someone else's culture by just, you know, attending a class or whatever. So it's really more just respect and humility for other cultures. So working with them towards obtaining that and specifically with our indigenous Native American population, some possible projects we named before, and then meeting with our San Gabriel Police Department partners on their community policing strategies. And specifically, Commissioner Brynhaugh is very interested in working with them in relation to residents who are neurodivergent and those with other forms of mental illness. Next. And then for data collection, we're starting on this as well. And we'll also bring forth, you know, the presentation on Assembly Bill 481, as was pointed out, has also been something that the here commission wants, should be involved in, according to the city council. But bringing this information that we have asked for from the police department to our next meeting, hopefully. And then again, Vice Chair Goto just said, making sure that any future city data collection is sent out in a number of different languages so that we can increase engagement. So those were kind of the highlights from the last meeting. They're all in our 2024 work plan agenda. The, the staff put them in as well. And so I will open it up to any additions.
So if I may add, as far as community engagement, I think we could, I think we talked about it before, and that was to create a recognition, a certificate for somebody that's basically showcasing what the, what the commission is championing, right? It's, it should be easy, home run, right? Where we, we do, we do it for other commissions. I think we do it for the Community Service Commission, right? So the, the steps are already there. And I think it would be good so that we can engage with the community and champion people within our community, doing wonderful things for, to promote the, and I.
One of the, the areas or one of the requests from the staff is for us to, at some point, if not tonight, come up with a timeline to help the staff kind of better plan activities as well. Do you have a recommendation for when you think this award should, towards the end of the year, the beginning of the year?
Two recommendations that we do, one simultaneously with the, with the Community Service Commission, right? I think that would be the best time, maybe kind of coin that as the time where we have certificates. Or we can have it separate and maybe do it around like November or December, which might kind of like highlight the person a little bit more and separate these awards. And I think that would be probably what I would side with the most, having a separate one.
Community Service has a couple of different awards. They have an older American, they have a couple of different things, right?
Yeah, I, I don't remember the dates off the top of my head, but I believe we used to do them just before summer or just after summer. So at the end of the year, wouldn't conflict. So that would better suit it at that time.
Does November sound like a feasible date? Not as many things going on after, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on in November, December, that's the only thing, right?
Yeah, so.
Thanksgiving, trunk, yeah.
You're competing with kind of marketing submissions for the award. If that's, if, if you're looking for nominations for the award, you are competing as far as social media outreach during that time, kind of back-to-back events that are being pushed out at that time, on top of kind of normal business news that would be pushed out. But as far as us making it happen by the end of November, that would be feasible, but it depends on kind of what you're anticipating and getting outreach.
Right. The last thing we want is to compete it and drown it out. So is there any, like, if maybe a follow-up item or we can look at the calendar or you can look at the calendar and kind of gauge where, where we have like a, like a void where we can tuck it in? Is that something that we could do?
Sure. If, if the commission is comfortable with just pushing it back to the staff to assign a date, we're, we're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be assigning a date by which we would like release nominations, right? And I think it's wise to give it some time till the end of the year because we can let people know that we're planning on doing this so that they can start thinking about, oh, yeah, I'd love to nominate this person, right? And then if you can also identify a date for the actual event, then that would be helpful.
So what I've seen just from the outside with the Community Service Awards is that giving more time doesn't necessarily get you more, more nominations. People just tend to wait until the last minute and then they remember the day after the nominations were due, and then we just take those, you know? So I don't, so I was thinking maybe August and we give them July in the summer and we do it in, in August because it seems like August isn't a very busy month. But I agree, letting the staff take a look at the calendar would be a good idea, but I don't know if you give them a whole summer, if anybody's going to think about this.
Right. It's normally the typical suspects that are nominating people, right? And we kind of try to go away from that and try to have different people get nominated. That's why probably bringing up this different, totally completely different platform would bring that to light and bring somebody else to light. But again, it's normally the normal, the usual people pushing for the normal people involved in the community.
And last thing, and then Vice Chair Goto, is another suggestion that was made was that our initial participants in the All Are Welcome program maybe be our initial award winners. Or, or some portion of those people, depending on how many people take advantage of it.
Yeah, that kind of dovetails with my question was what is going to be the criteria for people to be nominated? So I think we need to develop that or discuss that as well.
Okay. I also have a question because I don't know the process for the customers, assuming the community services process, but is it online? Okay, awesome. Yeah, so maybe, you know, if you'd like to kind of take a look at what that, that, those questions look like, then maybe we can just, like you had mentioned, adapt them for this particular award.
And I also just wanted, if, if you know, how many submissions did we get for the Community Services Award this year?
That award did not happen this year.
Oh, okay.
Years past, it's around three or four, very similar to the Outstanding Older American Award.
Yeah. So maybe what we can do is we'll put that, it is already part of the 2024 work plan. It was actually part of the 2023 work plan. I looked back and saw that. So if maybe Commissioner Herrera, you would not mind just drafting what that criteria might look like?
Sounds good. I was going to say, you made me lose my train of thought. Yeah, definitely. Okay, I will definitely do that now I, I yield back.
I just had a couple of sort of thoughts about the, the plan in terms of, I agree, I think the budget should be pulled out separately. And I think maybe we should talk a little bit about what the cost of a screening might be at the, at the Mission Playhouse, what we were considering for the AAPI Heritage Month and Mental Wellness Awareness Month. I think you had $1,500, but what is the cost like for that?
Yeah, so the difficulty and I, I, this just popped in as the, the slide ran up because, so we offer movie screenings at the park. And so we pay for the licensing and the DVD rental. So that runs us anywhere from 300 to 600 typically based off of the attendance that we typically have. And it depends on the movie that you're, so a Disney movie is going to be a lot more expensive than a off-brand movie, if you will. Now, where the tricky part comes in is offering it at the playhouse because there's a separate set of licensing that's typically much more expensive when you're offering even free to the public out of the theater versus at a park or a school. And I realize that it probably makes no sense, but that's the way that the licensing was developed, so there's not really a ton of way around it. We would need to find out, we have a licensing, two licensing companies that we work with that I can certainly find out that information, but I don't think that the 1,500 would be enough to cover marketing materials plus the licensing plus anything additional that you were looking to have. Now, if you change the, the venue and do like a movie in the park type of situation, potentially that would be a lower cost oddly enough than something at the theater. So it's something to consider as an alternative if the licensing price comes back much higher than, than we're hoping.
Yeah, I think the, one of the reasons why we wanted to have it at the playhouse is we'd like to have a panel discussion afterwards to discuss the issues. And I don't know if we want to delve right into that right now, but, but I think it would be difficult to have that kind of discussion in an out, in an outdoor space. So in, in my budget ask, I had like 7,500 to 10,000, just depending on what those costs were going to be. And there may be some cost of doing the community award. I also, for outreach, tabling activities and maybe those speaker opportunities going out to different groups, I think we really need to develop a one sheet about the commission. I think it would be helpful as a leave behind for people to have more information about what the commission does and hopefully generate a little more interest in our activities and also commission applications when they, when they come due. I know we kind of talked about it a little bit early on, but just have never had the opportunity to really put a sort of marketing piece together.
As an alternative, and this is me not knowing the facilities that are available, but would Gaberlino High School have some space that might be suitable for screening that we might be able to ask them for?
I have no idea.
So Gaberlino does have a theater and auditorium, but we might run into the same problem as with being considered a theater. So I, I, my other concern though, and even with the playhouse, is the, when you and Commissioner Brynhaugh went to that screening, there were maybe what, 30 people there, it said? Though I would hate to be in the, in the playhouse and there be, even 100 people will be dwarfed in the playhouse. But there is the grapevine room where you could still set up a panel, the Padilla Room that, you know, the grapevine room, I don't know what the capacity is, but it's probably a good 7,500 or 75 or 100. So I wonder if it isn't a better idea to scale the program to a budget as opposed to scale the budget to, to the program? Like we just have a $2,000 program, whatever that would look like.
That makes sense.
So if the commission's open to just setting that at 15,000 or 2,000, we certainly can do all of the work from there.
I think that would also bring solution to what we had discussed amongst ourselves, which was food is always a draw and we wouldn't be able to do that necessarily in the Mission Playhouse Theater. So if it were in a smaller kind of conference room type setting, that would be more possible, I think. that would be more possible, I think.
I remember what I was gonna say. So are we good with that topic? So can I go back? Okay, so going back to the certificates, we're going to be out there, right? We're going to be out there in the community with this particular two different initiatives. One, building the bridge between these different organizations, AYC, La Casa, like was mentioned, right, speaking. These are perfect opportunities for us to submit nominations, right? Or to encourage people to submit nominations, speak out about these opportunities, right? And then the other initiative that I see opportunity is where we, when when we kick off that campaign for, is it all? All is all? All are welcome? When we kick off that campaign as well, we're going to be interacting with these businesses. And that's a perfect opportunity to let them know and and create awareness that we have this recognition that we're going to be offering. With that said, has it been done in the past where recognition is associated with a gift card or anything like that, a hundred dollar gift card as well?
No, typically it's either a plaque or a certificate. And then they're recognized during a commission meeting.
Would it be too much to ask for a hundred dollars of a budget just as a certificate? A gift card of appreciation to entice people to, you know, to get involved? And what does the commission think about that? First of all, is it feasible?
The the commission could certainly put in the request, but I wouldn't recommend since it's not customary across.
Because then people are gonna, people are gonna expect it. Okay.
Right.
I also concur with that. It's not something that's typically offered even in the city of Los Angeles. It is the gesture of receiving the certificate that is the acknowledgement.
Right. And the only reason I bring it up is so that we can increase participation. It's almost like if we have to put an award besides the recognition for people to get involved. But yeah, I totally understand.
Can we share Bernhaut or?
I was just going to mention about the data collection. I'm really excited that this is something that we're advocating for. I'm actually taking an a course on evidence and equity right now. One of the things I think that are kind of a key word that might be missing though, from item 7B, it says ensure the city's data collections efforts through community surveys are translated into Chinese, Spanish, and Vietnamese for equitable access. But that's only identifying that the survey will be translated, but not necessarily the results. And and I'm not sure how we, that is for me a form of transparency and access, right, to information that I think is incredibly helpful. And not only should the surveys be translated appropriately, but the information within them, the the data itself and whatever sort of analysis is performed ought to be made available to the public.
I think that's a great addition.
Commissioner Khan or Youth Ambassador Rios?
I had a couple of, I have a couple of other things if you don't.
Why me?
Go ahead.
Is that related to your point or it's just general that you're asking for? Okay. So I have three points which I think, so I wanted to find out if the staff during the year can plug one of the commissioners? Oh, excuse me. Can the staff plug us in or plug one of the commissioners in who can do the presentation and invite the comments from the public at events that are appropriate for our, for us? In other words, during the year, there may be some events that we that appropriate for us to participate in and to promote the commission as well as to invite the public. So that's one thought. Second is that if while we were doing the video on the the Indian tribes, the land acknowledgement tribe video done by students, would that be, there is, is there a possibility that we can have any video done on the mental wellness program that we've done through the years, like last year or the year or the future of that? So maybe a regular video would be helpful to put on the site and sort of promote throughout the during the year. That's second. And the third thing, I think Commissioner Herrera had suggested that we need a video for our here commission. So promotion, that might be another thing that we might want to do and works.
So just a couple.
I was just gonna say, I think it would be difficult to go back and do a video about the Mental Wellness Expo because we didn't shoot any footage of it. So I think that that might be a little bit difficult. But but I do think that there may be an opportunity to maybe if, you know, if there's the panel discussion, might be something that we could record and put on YouTube. Or I know that our speakers who come to our meetings, those are also, you know, posted as well. I I just hesitate to try to put something together for the Mental Wellness Expo because we 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 didn't, we didn't shoot any footage. So I think that would be a little bit difficult. It might be, it might be worthwhile to to do some sort of little promotional video for the commission itself that could be used around the time when we're recruiting for new commissioners. But but I think probably our PIO is the expert on 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 that content versus us trying to figure out what to do.
I will say, and then I'll let you go, Vice Chair, Goto, is that in terms of a video that Commissioner Ting, who is Commissioner Herrera's wife and on our Community Services Commission, did put together a really nice video our first year that a number of us used in our own kind of personal social media. And I think maybe we even showed it here. And so it is something that could either be used and edited or added on to. But there is kind of a little short video out there that could make the base for something else, so we can look into that.
So the other couple of items that I had under the Community Engagement, number two, under A, I think that for the examples, the first two might just be merged together, the movie screening with a panel discussion in May and continue providing programs for services for mental wellness. I would either strike the first one and or combine those two. And then for number five in that same section, the All Are Welcome program, we kind of, we we addressed that separately in item E. So we might not need that one to to be included under that number five. And then I think the same for the youth ambassador led project that's highlighted in blue. I think we're, we also have that kind of covered under Youth Engagement under number three, C, implement a service project that engages other community youth. I would just add, implement a youth led service project that engages other community youth. And then I'm not sure if on on number two in Community Engagement under item B, do we want to list the other, ensure the city continues to recognize Native American History Month and Black History Month at a minimum by proclamation with hopes of expansion. I know that, you know, AAPI and Hispanic Heritage Month are already recognized by the city, but do we want to spell those out as well as Pride Month in that section? Or just highlight those two that are, that were added by the commission? And the last thing is on in that same section on C, under the examples, I just wanted to change the wording for examples include bystander training, anti bias training, cultural diversity, mental health awareness. If we can change low income housing to affordable housing, homelessness and other relevant topics. And then to Commissioner Khan's suggestion for item E in that section, if we could change a safe zone, safe space campaign to the All Are Welcome program and just spell that out. And those were all my edits.
I would just like, it's already stated in the draft annual work plan, but I would like to emphasize that on, hold up, on the Youth Engagement three, I like how you guys are wanting to promote youth internships and opportunities. I just wanted to know if it's like, say, after me and Erin are finished with our internship, can we also take this? Or is this just for the youth interns that are going to be for the year? Just wanted to clarify.
I think at this point, there there isn't a program that's available. So it will be developed in whatever way we, the different commissions or or our groups will develop it. So one of the recommendations, it depends. Oftentimes it is if you've served on another commission where not, you know, you're not eligible to serve when maybe an internship. But who knows, we could, we could recommend whatever we would like to recommend. And then the PIO office, the Community Service Commission will make their own rules. But I don't know if serving on one commission would exclude you from other city internships. I don't think so. It probably would less go on your CV, on your resume.
I think I worded it wrong because I wanted to say because you guys want to promote and develop youth internships. So like say, me and Erin's, our youth council year ends and you guys post internship opportunities during 2024, can me and Erin's like, or just me apply to you guys?
Well, that's what I'm saying, depending on when they get developed. Unless there is a specific exclusion, then I don't see why you wouldn't be eligible. But right now, this is a proposal. There aren't any actual concrete internships. So hopefully we will develop them and then, yes, whatever the criteria are, as long as you meet them. But I don't think one of the criteria will be that if you've already served in a position, you're excluded for other ones. So yes, it would be open to you.
Okay. And then my second one was just, it's just something small, but about accessibility on five, where where you guys do outreach for whose primary language is not English. I've noticed that today where St. Gabriel sends their news and activities. I've noticed that it was also in Spanish. And mostly whenever my mom reads that, it's mostly in English and my mom's like, oh, can you explain to me what it says? And I translate it for her. And then my mom wanted me to translate it. And then and then I noticed, I was like, oh, there's this, it's in Spanish too. And that quite a bit made my mom like happy reading it. So I like how there's implemented in those small details, but hopefully we can continue to do that. Because even though it's small, I feel like this could be better outreach for most people. That's all.
Youth Ambassador Rios, did you have an opportunity to speak with Erin in terms of a proposal for a project? Because in terms of that timeline, we were thinking your term is going to be up in, at the end of March, essentially. So really you have the February meeting. So would you like to give us a heads up or preview of what you and and Vice or Youth Ambassador C2 are considering for our February meeting?
Yeah, we were, because of finals, we couldn't really talk too much about this. But we did come up with affordable housing and we're still trying trying to form of how we're going to do it. But that is mostly our main idea for now. Right now, I can't really say too much, but yeah.
So please, along those lines, if you can identify a commissioner to a staff member to help you if you need a speaker, whatever you would like that meeting to look like, but we would like to dedicate, you know, or allow you to kind of plan something for that that meeting. And you only have a few weeks to do it. So so just let us know how we can help you, please, once finals are over, maybe over Christmas winter break. You can work with a couple of commissioners that the city office will be closed from the 22nd to the 29th, I think, or sort of week? Okay. Well, so the city staff might not be available, you know, for a few days throughout the holidays. But if we can start to give them an idea about how they can help you, then that would be good.
Just to clarify, you said until February?
So and I don't know if anyone else wants to ring him, but if we're having the Police Department for our January meeting, it's February or March because the end of March will be, March will probably be your last meeting because we'll have the new youth ambassadors. And I don't necessarily want it to be your last meeting that you get to host or get to, you know, participate more actively in. I would vote for February.
So, okay, as soon as possible. Okay, okay. We could do it.
All right, so is the presentation to the to the here commission, that's that's your kind of concept for what the project will be?
It's mostly here for the commission, I think, make it something for the whole city. Yeah, because it's big, you know, affordable housing, it's not something that's easy. But I guess it's for the city that we would like to do it with.
Okay. Maybe for for you and Erin to consider when you're doing your planning is how can you involve other youth as well to be a part of it? And I know that's a big issue, so just keep that in your back pocket.
So in terms of our work plan, do we provide you with enough? Enough of a skeleton?
I appreciate it. I do just have a couple additional notes before the agenda item wraps up. So the items for A and AI and essentially AI or A1 and A2, I would recommend removing those unless there's additional substance that or specificity. So if the commission's okay with removing those for now, maybe it gets picked up at the next.
I think I kind of helped put those on originally. And so I was just, the main things I was looking for was that having the information to be like easier to access on the website. And I know that, you know, Clara has streamlined a lot of stuff, things are a little bit better. But at the same time, you know, when you go in to find like affordable housing, resources and things like that, it's not, there's not a lot there. So I mean, I still feel like it is a priority, but I don't know how exactly we're like trying to address it, if not of like a website and resource, you know, redesign. So I'm okay with with removing it for this year, if that's what other people concur with.
I think I I'm also okay with removing it in the sense that we don't have a specific kind of program or recommendation attached to it. And so just in the sense of trying to clean this up a little bit, but keeping it as, and I don't, you know, if we want to shorten it or whatever, but I I the idea of why you put it, we put it on there to begin with is still valid and we're still concerned. But you are correct that we don't have a specific program that we want to run in relation to it, so.
And I'm wondering, like, is that something that the city is more open to? And like trying to think through the ways that the resources are listed on the website and?
Yeah, so we're entertaining a couple of different processes or thoughts on on the city side to make resources more available to members of the public. We do have a couple different areas where resources are available or kind of in general information. So we include some of it in Discover SG, we include some of it on the online portal. But obviously, the online portal is a bit more difficult to to navigate, as you've mentioned. And RFP has gone out for a potential And RFP has gone out for a potential website redesign. So as part of the questions or in the interview, we can look at adding a question as far as accessibility and how we, and once that vendor is selected, how best that information can be displayed. So that's not kind of tossed to the wayside as part of the redesign. The difficulty now, given the current website, is trying to reconfigure an entire website just for that one component could be difficult. But if it's incorporated as part of a new design, that would be a much easier transition to happen. So I'll certainly connect with Clara as we're navigating through that process. That's kind of one of the key items that's included.
Maybe we can reword it then to say, not, Commissioner Brennhaug, what do you think about on B? Implement a resource page on the city website on various topics relating to the, what if we put implement a more accessible resource page on the city website? Is that addressing?
Or more just, not implement, but like, not ensure. It's like a word like that, like try to prioritize accessibility in the web, in the design of the, or?
So would the goal be for the commission to be involved in the process? Or just ensure that it happens, is essentially what?
Yeah, I don't know that we want to be super involved, but I guess, yeah, just that it gets added as a priority.
I like prioritize.
Okay, prioritize.
Prioritize a more accessible resource page on the city website as it is being redesigned or something to that effect.
So Matthew, right now as it is, how often do we visit the resource page to update?
Transparency, transparency, not very often. We update our Discover SG much more frequently as needed, because it gets eyes on it once a quarter.
And how accessible, we all know that we need to restructure the whole website, right? And that sounds like what we're getting ready to do. How accessible is the resource page right now?
It depends on what you're looking for in honesty. If you're looking for senior resources, it should be fairly straightforward to find. As far as homeless services or mental health resources, those may be a bit more difficult to navigate because it's, it's not tied to a specific age bracket or population that we're serving through other services.
So when the new architect comes in, they're gonna have to reimagine. Or not even that, just use things that are working for other cities already, right? One big thing to, to consider is how often we quote unquote refresh, right? And make sure that everything's accurate and we upload stuff that's important, resources, customer assistance programs, and so on and so forth. I think that's something to definitely have a conversation with whichever contractor we're gonna go with.
Then one more request that I have heard from the public is, and I don't know if this is possible, but a community calendar, at least with the nonprofits that the city works with. Because it's very difficult sometimes when people are trying to plan things and don't want to plan it on the same dates that other local nonprofits are doing functions. If we had a community calendar as part of our city website, it would be helpful.
I know we have a lot on our plate already, but would it be beneficial to the commission to have the person, the architect, come and give us a sample of what they're gonna have? And then we can give them feedback at that one moment.
I don't feel like I know enough about website building to really be a helpful part of that conversation. I think these ideas that we're giving to Matthew, if they can take them to these planning meetings, and I don't know if, if there'll be some public, you know, venue for, for the public to put in their information. But I, I don't want to hear about website planning. It sounds like it would be a discussion in the weeds that I don't understand, so.
I think the difficulty too is, is once they come to present what they've designed, it's gonna be very difficult to make changes at that point because they've already invested quite an expensive amount of developer time in putting it together. So I do agree with the chair that we should probably make, make what our priorities are known before the process starts.
So then there's the interesting point, right? So then whenever we're dealing with the individual that we're gonna be dealing with, making sure that we have a easy ways, a easy stream to, to provide those change requests so that they can be implemented in a timely manner as well.
Sure. So the, the website designer really just makes sure that the pages are laid out pretty. The actual text is done by staff. So as long as, now that we have kind of the, the clear direction from the commission, we can certainly have that in the back of our minds as all of the website is unfolding. And then the text can certainly be brought to the commission to review that maybe we're not adding certain things that we should or to remove things.
Right. So the hardest part is gonna be building the skeleton. Because once you have the skeleton, then you guys are gonna come in and implement whatever or add whatever you guys want to it. Yeah, okay.
Now for two D, it reads develop and implement programs and activities that make sustainable practices accessible to everyone to reduce impacts of climate change on low and moderate income communities. Is that something that the commission wanted to keep or wanted to elaborate on? It is specific, but yet not specific enough for a program or, or service to be created out of it?
I think we were trying to leave it general because I don't think it's gonna be an event necessarily, given our, our already very full agenda. But that maybe this, an activity could be, you know, having a speaker come.
So can we just add it under CI, climate and sustainable, sustainable practices? You know, low, or affordable housing homelessness, climate and sustainable practices and other relevant topics? And yes, do away with D.
Perfect. And that should be the last one. The only additional note is, is as Chair Jennings mentioned, once the, the work plan is approved, I will ask that the commission comes back and really prioritizes which ones in particular that the commission wants to accomplish first and/or a schedule as far as which ones should be worked on at a particular time or which commission members will be working on it. So in that way, the, the staff can more adequately support the here commission. It is somewhat difficult to pivot, although it, sometimes it seems like it might be a month in advance. There may be several special events that are all converging or, or new services that we're offering to the public that may be released at the same time that a project may be kicking off. So I will just ask that, that the commission really pinpoint some of those items. And if, if there is something that's left intentionally vague, that, that it's not something that picks up and then is expected to be implemented at that time, that there may need to be several months between the, the thought process and then the implementation. And I think that the last year and a half, we've, we've done our best to really quickly, navigate as quickly as we can, which I know it doesn't seem that quick. But we want to be sure that we are providing adequate support to the commission, since you all are advocating so well for the community. And in order to do that, that does, you know, take some of that communication back, back and forth to be sure that, that we're allocating the correct staff time at the correct time.
It looks like just from our, our program that the main focus is going, or the main items are going to be our youth-led meeting in February, our All Are Welcome program, which is going to mainly be in June, but is going to start the month before. Hopefully, our movie screening will be in May. And then maybe our community award will be in August. The All Are Welcome program, sounds like it's going to be our biggest thing for this year. And so hopefully, we'll take a couple of those planning meetings out of the main council as we deal with Mental Wellness Expo. And then if we can come up within January, some recommended speakers, at least five or six, I think we should be able to find five or six meetings to be able to have a speaker. So that is kind of the timeline that I see. February, May, June, and August are going to be our biggest things. And then the speakers will line up before that.
I'd also ask, I'd also add the outreach for the next youth ambassadors, which should probably start when they get back from school. So that'll definitely need some attention as well.
And that outreach will be through our youth ambassadors, I think. What we did last year was we didn't send applications out, I think, until spring break because we knew prior to that, they were just gonna be too busy with midterms. But we'll ask our current youth ambassadors to start spreading the word as well.
Is there a possibility that we can kind of discuss based upon our scope, the kind of speakers or the topics that we can recruit people with, for, in other words, speakers? So maybe commissioners can actively work on getting, so that's, or suggesting, recommending a speaker for that. So right now, I don't know what kind of speaker or what kind of topic we need.
So that's what I would ask for us to bring back to the January meeting. So this one, we don't have to turn in a list of speakers, so we don't necessarily have to come up with it today. But yes, I would look at our goals. And if there is a particular speaker or topic that you want as a commissioner, I want as a commissioner to bring that back in January. Keeping in mind what, what our goals are, but we can certainly, I am hoping in January that we're able to give Matthew a list of either specific speakers or at least topics and maybe some suggestions for where to go to find those speakers.
I think if we could just get to the topics, the speakers might be a little easier to pick, so. Yeah, of course. General consensus, so.
And I think, just as I may add, that if you were bringing, just a quick suggestion, that we should limit the speakers that each commissioner can invite to make it fair across the board, like let's say for example, three, so that not just one commissioner is bringing like five topics, you know? I think that would promote inclusivity within the group. And another suggestion is, it might seem a little common sense, or not common sense, for lack of better words, just not repeating the speakers. I think that would be, because we're gonna get to a point where we're gonna run out of speakers, like what it seems. But there's a lot of speakers out there. But just keeping in mind not to repeat speakers and not having the same group come over and over. Just want to make that suggestion, a recommendation.
Thank you. Any other clarifying or additional information, Matthew, that you need? Any other comments from anyone?
I did see that you put in a $5,000 request for the All Are Welcome program in the work plan. So just wondering if that's, you're gonna take that out and then do the request separately?
So the budget right now is really just rough. As, as Vice Chair Goto said, if we really were to do a big movie screening, it was gonna cost way more than 1,500. I was really just trying to put something together that added up to 6,000. We can ask for more than.
No, no.
But, and I, so I don't know if we know how much the All Are Welcome program is going to cost. And it may be similar to the movie that we set a budget and that's as much as it's going to cost this year. I don't know where the $5,000 came from.
I think, I think we were gonna strike that whole number five, including the budget, and pull the budget separately because the All Are Welcome is already detailed in, in letter E. So we won't even mention that $5,000. I think the $5,000 came from what we had spent previously on the Mental Wellness Expo and just figuring that was a round number. But I think we're gonna just strike five altogether and then not mention anything specific for that campaign, but do the overall budget. Do, Matthew, do we need to do a line item budget, do you think?
I'll need to ref, to review how best it will be presented to council so that it's clear exactly where it's going. I will likely end up pulling, I'll likely present it as very similar to how it is. And then under the fiscal impact, I'll notate them by line item. But then they could refer back to the details. So that's kind of my initial thought based off of the discussion. That way, there's no question. Now, at the time that it goes to council, I'm not entirely sure because it's not budget season right now. So I'll need to just reconfirm what that will look like. And typically, this goes under consent. But if it's a making an adjustment to an existing budget item, it potentially still could go under consent, but I'm not sure if council would want to have a larger discussion and have staff present it under new business.
And our goal was for this to be presented by the February meeting?
Yeah. So based off of the, the budgetary items and if it needs to go on new business and kind of how many are stacked up, I will do my very best. I can certainly get it done. It's just whether or not there's space during those January meetings. So it'll have to be a discussion that I'll have to have with Mark offline.
I mean, how much time do they need to add an agenda item on? I've seen agenda items added on days before.
Sorry, I apologize. I must have not communicated that well. So it's not the adding it to the agenda item, but there may be a plethora of our, already kind of confirmed agenda items that may not be able to be pushed. But that's certainly a discussion that we can have. That maybe there, there might be an agenda item that could wait for a future meeting, whereas this one's a bit more time sensitive.
Okay, thank you.
Matthew, just a point of clarity. Did you recommend that we start thinking about assigning roles and responsibilities? Or did I catch that wrong?
Sure. So if there's larger projects like the All Are Welcome campaign, those are, are areas that I would encourage, you know, one, two, three commissioners be the leads on those. And we, we as staff have a main contact and can make the, the little decisions along the way versus having to wait for a commission meeting to come back and get approval from them. That's just one example of the projects, but it would be helpful, once it's approved, to have that discussion.
When do you think it will begin, like, when do you think it will be approved?
Unfortunately, I can't give you a, a concrete timeline right now, but we will do our best to have it as soon as possible.
So possibly February or?
I would imagine by then, by the February meeting, it should be approved.
Right. Because the reason, the reason I'm bringing it up is if it's before that, and it's probably not, right? It's gonna be a disservice because we're gonna have rotating commissioners, right? And ambassadors. So it'll be a little bit hard and difficult to assign people. I think it will be easy to assign one lead at least, but not the whole team because we don't know what the revolving door might bring.
So thank you. Thank you, everybody, for that discussion. So we'll move on to commission reports. Each commissioner may address the here commission and public on matters of general information and/or concern. This is also the time for commissioners to report on conferences and/or meetings that they have attended. We have any reports?
Hi. I guess for one report would be that, just to clarify, because in the St. Gabriel, I know that they added the St. Gabriel Drive, where it costs $1 and it was promoted in Gaberlino, where you could get a ride for $1 around St. Gabriel. One of concerns I've heard and also personally meet was that it, I know that you have to pay in credit card, but some were wondering if you can just pay with cash, which I know some people were kind of reluctant to do that because in the app, you have to, it doesn't really specify if you need to pay with the credit card. So I was wondering if you can pay with just cash.
Yeah, so you can, for the, you can choose to pay at the time of the ride. When you book the ride through the app, it'll give you the option to pay by cash or by card. So just before you click confirm or book ride, it'll, it'll make you choose one of the options. So if you don't have a, if you don't input any of the credit card information, it typically defaults to the cash, which means at the time of, of getting on the van, you would have to pay the, the $1 fare and then you'll be able to, to take your ride.
Just one more thing, because I also heard it only limits like one bag specifically, so.
Sure. So the, the vans are intended to kind of maximize the space available. So it, it's it's really intended for, you know, like grocery shop. You can do your grocery shopping if you can, you know, fit it within your seat or space within the ride. Since it is a ride-share program, we wouldn't want to book a ride for, let's say, three participants for the one van. But one participant brings, you know, five luggages with them. And then now one person can no longer get on that van because of the large amount of items that this one person has brought. Now, if there's a need that, that needs to be addressed, meaning someone needs to do particular shopping and is unable to do that, and it's essential to their day-to-day life, then we can certainly discuss that through our department. They can reach out to me and I can navigate how we might be able to assist them.
Yeah. Because I've heard some, mostly was from a neighbor that they're older senior. And he, he asked me if, because he does groceries, and he mostly walks. And he says that in the Hawaiian market, they allow him to take the cart. So there's also that. But he mostly, especially with his old age, his back doesn't. And he was quite afraid if he wasn't allowed because of that policy of like one bag. So I just wanted to clarify that. Because it doesn't, I read the description online, but never really gave any information about that.
Yeah. If you're able to provide the gentleman's contact information, we can reach out and provide either additional clarity, or if he's been turned away because he had too many items with him at the, coming back from the grocery store, we can navigate that with the third-party agency that does the actual driving and see how we can better service him.
So I attended the December 5th, the holiday tree lighting. It was busier than last year. That last year was my first, but this year was my second. And I thought this was a lot more celebrative mood, I should say. And I saw Matthew running around controlling the traffic. And I also saw Mark and the council members just running around. I mean, of course, they were just fine. But I thought it was a lot of lighting, a lot of, a lot more fun and a lot more people this time around. So that was one. And the second one was the fire department, I think, did a fundraiser for their own. I think there was a gentleman who is sick, who has cancer. I forgot. One of their department. Yeah. Oh, it was police department. So I did not attend, but I did participate in helping. That's right.
All right. Well, one thing that was missing was amazing Chassi Nunez organized booths, which I missed. But, but, you know, overall, it was amazing with the train. And I don't know. I think I saw Matthew, may, may not have seen Matthew with a conductor hat. No, I'm messing with you, Matthew. I almost jumped in there and started driving that train. Anyways, all right. So I did attend a bunch of events like I normally do, but I'm going to skip that. Just make a general announcement. After 15 years, I decided to resign from SoCal Gas, which has been nothing but amazing, and to me, to pursue another opportunity that came, which was a municipal sales manager at a waste management company, Republic Services, for full disclosure, second-largest waste management company in the nation, overseeing over 40, 40 or so states, contracts in states. With that said, I, I'm going to, at this point, make this other announcement that I will not, I will be stepping aside from the commission. And this is, makes sense now why I was asking the particular question of assigning people to stuff. But if I said I was going to do something, I will be delivering on that. And I want to allow opportunity for somebody else. I know that we have about four applicants at this point, and it closes on December 15. I want to encourage the community to, to participate, specifically one of our community members. I'm going to, he's going to remain nameless right now. That's always here. I want to, he should be sitting over here. He's here more times than, you know, I can, I think he's been here more times than I've been here. So he should definitely, definitely be sitting up here. Encourage him to join. But I know that it's a personal choice, and I respect that. But welcome the community to get involved. I will commit to my time here. I'll try my best not to miss the next three meetings that we probably have scheduled under my time and my commitment here. Do my best. And it was, it's been a pleasure. This is not goodbye yet, right? But it's been a pleasure. I know we've had different points of views, and that's the beauty of having many people, right? It's a diverse community, and everybody's entitled to their point of view, and everybody's respected. So I appreciate every single one of you, and thank you so much.
Congratulations, Commissioner Herrera. That's really great. I wanted to follow up on an announcement that was made at a previous meeting. Last month, I attended the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Public Hearing, and heard comments from people across the state who live in areas without access to reliable, high-speed internet, and the detrimental impact it's had on their education, job opportunities, and access to public services. There were many comments on that call stating that the coverage maps that were provided by the internet companies were not accurate and showed that there was more coverage than actually exists. I wanted to let people know that if you missed the call, there's still an opportunity for you to submit your comments online. You can go to this website, and I'm going to read it slowly because it's long. aps.cpuc.ca.gov/c/r2302016. You can submit your online comment, and you can also see all of the other comments that have been submitted. And last month, I also attended the State of Queer and Transgender Pride in the San Gabriel Valley, which was hosted by the SGV LGBTQ Center and featured a youth panel and an adult panel that was moderated by Martine Herrera, who's the mayor pro tem of El Monte. The center will be launching an SGV-wide community health needs assessment for LGBTQ people in the San Gabriel Valley next year. But the pilot survey that they did this year revealed that the number one stated need was for more, more safe spaces for LGBTQ folks. So we're right on track with, with our activities. And I also attended the opening dialogue on Reckoning with Our Racial Past at Janum, the Japanese-American National Museum Democracy Center in partnership with the Smithsonian Institute Initiative that's called Our Shared Future. It was a really impressive panel discussion. It was followed by a relaunching of the Democracy Center, which has been renamed for Senator Daniel Inouye. I just wanted to read their mission. The Democracy Center explores the rights, freedoms, and fragility of democracy, helping to build bridges and find common ground between people of diverse backgrounds and opinions. They've got a whole couple of speaker series, a fellowship program, and a writing fellowship that they're launching this year. And we didn't really discuss it, but I think January 13th was the date that we selected to, to attend The Bias Inside Us. It was the date that most of the commissioners could, could make it. So that's a Saturday. Commissioner Khan, I know Sundays were better for you, but I hope you'll be able to join. It's a, it's a Saturday. Yeah, January 13th. We'll be touring the exhibit and, and have a debriefing discussion with the director of the center. So looking forward to that. And since this is our last meeting of the year, I want to wish everyone a lovely holiday and a very happy new year. Yeah. I don't have anything this month.
So I want to do one thing that we forgot to do earlier. There's one other slide that we forgot to present. And this goes to our 2024 work plan, but it'll be kind of a fun way, I think, to, to end the meeting. But I'll make my couple of comments first. So one is just a reminder of our special meeting on December 18th at 5:30 PM. I thought it was the movie video. Were we doing the movie video or no? Okay. Anyway, December 18th at 5:30 PM, not 6:30, but 5:30. And that's going to be in the Grapevine Room. And Chief Elizaldi will be joining us along with, I think, some other officers. And we'll be, the agenda hasn't been set yet, but it will be posted soon. So please look out for that. December 22nd and 23rd, when is Santa coming to town? 22nd and 23rd, I think in 24th. Is it four nights? The 20, okay. Look on the website. It is my favorite time. If you have never heard those sirens coming down your street and run outside to find Santa, then you should do it this year. It's just super fun. So the city's divided into quadrants, and depending on, on where you live, you know, look for your, your schedule. The other thing that I wanted to say that I will bring the link for next time, but many of you may have heard in the news, I am a member of the Harvard Community as an alum and as a parent. And Claudine Gay, along with the presidents of a couple of other universities, have recently really been under fire in terms of the environment on campus. And just very, in a very timely way, there was a webinar today that I attended on free speech, political speech, and hate speech. That was really excellent. And they recorded it. It is open to the public, but the link won't be available for a week. So I'll bring it back to our, our next meeting. And I think it is important for people to see, given the times that we are in. And then the last thing that I have that we missed earlier in the meeting, but the proposed meeting, our proposed movie screening is a movie called Dealing with Dad. It is a dramedy, but more a comedy, I think. And so we have a little short clip that we were going to play earlier and forgot to, to do that. So just to close our meeting and to join Vice Chair Goto with happy holidays and really a special appreciation to our staff members, to Matthew, to Adrian, to Rebecca, to Mark, and all of those others behind the scene for making our 2023 very successful. Yeah.
Hey, what's going on with Dad?
Yeah, he's just been a little mopey around the house, and that's about it.
What does that mean, mopey, Larry?
You know you have to go up there, right?
Are you freaking kidding me?
Why do I have to go?
If I go there alone, I will either have a nervous breakdown, or I will kill Mom and Dad.
If I want abuse like that, I would just stick my neck with needles.
Oh, you're going.
Not going. You're going!
I told you, I don't need medicine.
Dad, come on. Do you think this is normal, just lying around all day watching The View? Dad, you're watching The View? That is not natural. Jesus, Larry, why didn't you tell us earlier he was like this?
The freakiest part is-
He offered us money.
Yeah. But it's pretty great, though, right?
What? So he just takes a few of these pills, and he's going to be okay?
No. You know, it's depression. It's not erectile dysfunction. So.
Oh!
There's any chance that Dad's going to listen to anyone? It's going to be you.
Yeah, you're like Neo from The Matrix. You know, like the chosen one, like, but you didn't know you were the chosen one until you met Morpheus, right?
Where are you going with this?
Get off me!
I'm slipping!
Get off me!
This is literally the worst fight I've ever seen.
Damn it, Dad! Ouch in my eye! Oh, I'm going blind. Dad could just take his meds, and so I can go back to my happy life. But no, what? Good problem?
She just got out of prison.
We'll talk more about it. And I don't know if the, if the trailer really, especially because it was so hard to hear. But it brings up a lot of, of issues that we've been speaking about lately in terms of mental wellness with depression, anxiety, and generational trauma, and just family dynamics, and a lot of, it has been used to kind of foster a lot of conversations. And so we'll bring more of that back to you in January.
Is that just for us or the, the public?
No, that's hopefully.
That was the screening we were discussing that we want to bring to everyone in May.
Oh. Look forward to that.
Okay. So, oh, staff comments. Are there any staff members have the opportunity to address the commission and public on matters of general information and/or concern? Are there any staff comments?
Not today. Thank you.
Okay. So the next regular here commission meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 23rd at 6:30 PM. Information regarding matters to be considered at each meeting will be available on the Friday before the here commission meeting on the city's website at www.sangabrielcity.com. This regular meeting is now adjourned.